...be like, "Oh, we're moving relatives in." And then, look, people, especially when there's a huge incentive to get rent increases, which is currently the case, you're going to see more Ellis-ing. I've heard that Ellis-ing hasn't been that dramatic in the last few years, but it is going to go up, especially with all the transit and development in the city. The development side of it, they can't Ellis to develop if the city doesn't approve the development. And of course, I'm not going to get into the development rules, but you know, to the degree that some of the developments might be developments that you want to challenge, as citizens of the city, you can consider that. I'm not sure how much you can do because the developer has some rights to develop, and we don't need to go into that, but...
I can go into that.
Okay, so we're gonna move it along because, yes, one question, one more question on the Ellis.
I'll do, I'll go after.
Okay, after her, yes.
This is a nice segue.
Okay, so let's keep the questions really brief because we want to go into the second panel. And the attorneys, the rent control board, they're gonna stay afterwards, so if you have a specific question, you can go ahead and ask them. And they also have their business cards. They have information that you can follow up on your specific case. Because some of you might not want to talk about your case in front of everyone here, but you can speak to them afterwards privately, okay? But question here, yes?
It's not a question. If I understand the Ellis Act, and I understand that people are being targeted, but my main concern is all of the development in this area, the traffic and the apartments.
Pocahontas, pocahontas.
Okay, okay. So that's what we're gonna go into right now. One more question over here, and we're gonna go into that issue, because I think many of you are here to talk about that issue as well, okay?
It's not so much a question, but I'm gonna tell you right now that Venice is facing the decimation of its character and the affordable housing. There's no market, just like here in Santa Monica. And whatever happens in Santa Monica, ladies and gentlemen, happens in Venice, happens in Playa Vista, happens in El Segundo, and just north and south of us. I'm here tonight as an individual, as a Venice resident, and a community member who serves anyone who knocks on my door or rings my phone. I'm here to tell you that we are challenging the Coastal Commission tomorrow again, like we did in March. We removed the diminutive waivers on eight different projects in March, and they're being heard tomorrow. And what that means is that when they have removal of properties where they're supposed to afford the third one, very low-income and low-income homes, if they put three on there, the one is supposed to be for the working poor, for families, for veterans who are homeless, for people who need to live West Side. I know a gentleman who works at Sidewalk Cafe. It takes two and a half hours for him to get home at Vermont and Eighth. And he works right here in Venice, and he gets to have breakfast with his family on Sunday mornings, then he has to go to sleep while they go to church. So to me, this is a quality of life issue. They're building from property line to property line, and it's taking away and removing the quality of life for people who live on either side of these properties that are being rebuilt. We have to challenge the Mellow Act. The Mellow Act is a state law that within two miles of the beach, there's supposed to be an affordable unit for every 10 units. So let's say the Smith Architects and By Design do 300 condominiums. Thirty of those are supposed to be low-income. They are looking, it looks good on the permit, and they get the permit, but then they forget about their commitment to the community. And we can put, we can hold pressure, and we can organize to make sure that these apartments that haven't been Mellow acted are given the opportunity to do right by us. So I'm gonna pass around a signature sheet for Padres Unidos, for Families United, for Parents United, and I'll share that with PYC and with Power, who's in the house. And we have to get smarter on the fight in English, Spanish, and any other language that we speak, because you know what? I don't know about you, but I like living where I live. And it's not right that the commitments aren't being followed. And this goes deep, because as soon as we presented last March, just to give you an idea, the city planning person who's been green-lighting all these demolitions of these homes, he left. He was removed from the city planning department. He was transferred. So I'm here to help you and shine a little light on the end of the tunnel.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we're gonna, any specific question to the attorneys? We can follow up with them after the event, okay? So we're gonna move on, because we have a very exciting panel. Before we do that, I want to recognize some dignitaries and some guests that are here as well. Is Nancy Greenstein and Margaret Quinones, I know they were here a little while ago. Oh, they're over here. If they can come, well, they're on their way. Former mayor and a friend, Michael Feinstein, who's here. Thank you, Michael, for being here. So here's, from the Santa Monica College Board, the chair of president, is the chair of president, one of those. Yeah, Nancy Greenstein, thanks, thank you Nancy for being here. And also Margaret, Margaret Quinones, yeah, Margaret's here as well. Also, yes, former mayor and a friend of the Pico neighborhood, someone who's always stood with us, someone that has been a champion for us here in our community, Bobby Schreiber, former mayor Bobby Schreiber. Thank you very much, Bob. Okay, so we all know, and thank you, your name, ma'am? Your name, yeah?
Sarah Young.
Sarah, Sarah Young? Sarah Young brought up a very good point, you know? We're talking about all these strategies that landlords are using in the city of Santa Monica, in Venice, to take properties away from people, to get renters, especially renters paying, you know, rent-controlled units, out of the city, so that they can make more profit. We know that people have a lot of money to make in this city. We also know that the light rail that's coming in, the Expo Authority, right? We have a stop on Bergamot, there's gonna be a stop on Seventeenth Street, and a stop on Fourth Street in Colorado. Three stops in the city of Santa Monica. We know that that's gonna exacerbate the market pressures, that these properties are gonna become more expensive, right? This has happened before in the city of Santa Monica, when they brought the train. The train came in, tourism started blossoming in the city. If you read the sidewalks, you can walk down Pico Boulevard. This Pico Boulevard used to be called Front Street. I just learned that the other day. And then it was Fremont Avenue, and then it became Pico Boulevard. But when the train came in, tourism came in, and then all of a sudden, land speculators, there used to be tomatoes, you know, they used to grow tomatoes out here in the Pico neighborhood. Somebody told me that the first gang in the Pico neighborhood was called the Tomato Gang, if you can imagine that. So there's been, there's been a lot of change, and the change is coming. And we know that, we see the writing on the wall, that the residents of this community, the citizens, the people here in this room, that we need to unite like never before to have a fighting chance, to keep our housing, to ensure that the future development of the city is within the scale and character of our community, that we don't lose the green space, that we don't lose the courtyard that are all around us, you know, that make these apartments livable and make our city a livable city. So how do we do that? How do we confront organized money? And greed, as Elena said, is not illegal. In fact, that's part of the problem, right? But how do we do that? How do we build power? That's really what the question is today, and this next panel is gonna address that. But we have, before we do that, I have some friends from Power that are here, right? And I wanted to give you a minute or two to talk about your program, because I know that you all have something to say real quick, and then I'm gonna introduce the panel.
Buenas noches a todos. Buenas noches a todos. Yo pertenezco a la organización de Power. Es una organización que se enfoca directamente en el problema que tiene real la comunidad.
Hello, I'm with, Daisy Vega, with an organization called Power, and we're doing organizing here on the West Side.
Sí. Nuestra organización se caracteriza por viviendas públicas y conservar la vivienda de cada persona.
We work to ensure that, yeah. Yeah, you wanna help?
Y que la traducción en inglés no está muy bien.
Our organization, it works in public counseling and ensuring that we preserve people's housing.
Nuestra organización se destaca por conservar la vivienda de cada uno de ustedes, y aquí están violando sus derechos.
We want to preserve every one of your housing units, and here, there is a violation of your rights.
Especialmente houses Santa Monica.
Especially the housing Santa Monica.
Están violando los derechos porque no respetan a los seniors, no respetan a las personas cuando necesitan una ayuda.
There's a lack of respect for seniors and for people who need help.
Yo trabajo con ELAC, trabajo con la comunidad latina de acá de Santa Monica, y este me dado cuenta de muchos abusos y desalojos que están haciendo con ellos.
I work with ELAC, East LA Community Corporation?
ELAC es la población de la ciudad.
Oh, oh, okay. And I am aware of many abuses.
Están desalojando a la gente latina porque ellos nulen las pólizas y nulen los contratos.
They're evicting many Latino people because they're unable to read their contracts and the rules.
La verdad que nuestro compañero acá dijo que ustedes pueden aplicar a housing si se quedan sin su apartamento, falso. Hay más de tres mil personas esperando en lista.
And my friend here said that you can apply for a voucher or to live in, she said housing, I think she means affordable housing, but it's not really true, because there's a 3,000 person waiting list.
Ya no pueden aplicar los seniors a apartamentos en Santa Monica ni en Los Angeles.
You can't apply for those apartments in Santa Monica or in Los Angeles.
Les piden un ingreso de más de 25,000 al año.
You're asked for income of more than 25,000 a year.
Así que las personas de bajos recursos no pueden aplicar ya a apartamentos de bajos recursos.
So low-income or very low-income people are excluded from being able to apply for that housing.
No se dejen quitar sus viviendas. Reorganicen. Luchen. Una comunidad unida vence.
Don't let them take away your housing. Fight, organize, and united community will win.
Cambien las pólizas de Santa Monica con las personas que protegen a los dueños de las viviendas privadas.
Change the politics, change the policies and the rules, so that you protect the affordable units.
Legal aid trabaja también con ustedes, así que cualquier pregunta estamos para servir en la organización, gracias.
Legal aid is available to help you, and whatever you need from us, we're able to help you.
Hi, my name's Mark Lipman. I'm also with Power. A couple things impressed me here tonight, and it's like, rents are going up because it's profitable for a few people, and we're being driven out of our homes, and greed isn't illegal. What's wrong with our laws? What's wrong with our system? Whose country? Our country. Whose community? Our community. If we're going to fight and preserve our communities, we have to win. Are you tired of losing, of having developers coming in here from god-oh, who knows where, coming over here, crushing our community, and telling us we have to take it? And if we don't like it, get out? Are you tired of that? I'm tired of that. And how we're gonna win is by organizing together, like we're doing tonight. I am so impressed seeing so many organizations and people who care, and a lot of friends and friends I see out here also, and wow, this is how we're gonna win. And I tell you something, Power, we're doing this not just in Santa Monica, but we're doing this around the entire region. We're organizing with our allies and our friends in low-income and in communities all over Los Angeles, and we're also doing this on a national level, connecting communities, building our power. Because when we work together, we win. And then we rewrite the rules and make greed illegal. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Power. Thank you for being here. And, okay, so now, I want to introduce our next group of panelists, okay? So if I can bring Sue Hemmerich.
One day you'll get a prize.
Okay, Sue Hemmerich, right? Hemmerich from the Planning Commission, Santa Monica Planning Commission. Armin Melkonias, founder of Residocracy. Richard McKinnon, Richard McKinnon, Santa Monica Planning Commission. Richard, thank you, Richard. Amy A., but I'm gonna try it out. Amy Acousti...
Oxticonis.
Oxticonis. Amy Oxticonis. Thank you, Amy. Okay, so as we go on to the next panel, we understand what was just said by Power, that we have to organize ourselves. Make sure that everyone that leaves here today, we have a petition as well as a sign-in sheet. We need to get everybody's name, phone number, email, because this is the only way that we build power, that we keep building, that we keep in communication. This is not gonna be a one-time town hall meeting. We're gonna continue to follow up, working with the different neighborhood associations, working with Residocracy, all the different sponsors of this meeting today. We're gonna continue to work together and broaden our outreach with groups like Power and other organizations throughout the West Side of Los Angeles or throughout Los Angeles to build the type of movement that's gonna help us stay in our homes here on the West Side. So with that, I wanna, the title of this next panel is Participation, Civic Engagement and Policy Solutions, because we need to change the rules. I mean, there was one interesting point that was said, that for community corporations in Santa Monica, we know that it's affordable housing, we think that's a good policy, that's a good practice for the city, to have money dedicated for affordable housing, that's part of the solution. We know that living wage jobs, that we ensure that there's living wage jobs in the city of Santa Monica, that's part of the solution as well, right? But we know that there are other things that we need to be thinking about, and that's why we have the panel next. And who wants to go first? Sue, you wanna go first? Okay. Okay, so we'll go the way we introduced everyone, so Sue, go ahead. So we want to talk about policy solutions and ideas for solutions.
So Elena says, "I'd like to model." Yeah, I like Elena's model, since nobody can see me over the table, okay? My name is Sue Hemmerich. I'm an attorney at Western Center on Law and Poverty. I'm on the Planning Commission. I carried a Residocracy petition. I supported them. I'm a member of SMUR. I'm a member of the Santa Monica Dems. I support the union, and so basically, there are so many issues here, and I work with Denise a lot, so that's always a fun thing, from legal. At Western Center, we, because we deal so much with issues that cut across people who have lower incomes, one of the major concerns for us at the moment is transit-oriented development. And the reason for that is because there's a lot of financial pressure to build housing, housing and frankly, commercial, near the train. The problem with it is that they view this as a solution, when in fact, the only real solution comes from affordable housing, because people with incomes of less than $25,000 are many times more likely to use public transit than people with incomes over that level. This is something we know, this is something that policy analysts throughout the state are working on all the time, and there have been some minor inroads in helping with these issues. There are a bunch of papers, if you want to look, people are talking about greenhouse gases and displacement. I think that we all understand that it doesn't do us any good if we take a neighborhood like the Pico neighborhood and displace the residents, who will be the most likely people to use the transit, and replace them with expensive office and expensive condos and apartments. And so we work on these issues. It is an uphill battle, you know, we have bills, we lose them, the governor vetoes them. We had an inclusionary housing bill at the end of last year that would have let us do more with our inclusionary housing. The government vetoed it. There are, now, some of the things, and I'm just sort of trying to cut through this quickly, because I don't have much time. Whenever somebody comes into your neighborhood and is building a rail line or talking about transit, you need to be careful. So for instance, they're talking about doing a memorial park area plan. I went to both of the community meetings, and I'm sorry, guys, I've been here a few times. I didn't see very many of you guys at these meetings. There were a lot of developers at the meetings. So you need to be there, you need to go, and you need to be heard, because at the end of the day, what they're gonna build is gonna be right on your backs. And they will not listen to you. You need to go to the community meetings, you need to talk to the members of the city council, you need to talk to the planning department, and you need, and I agree with everybody, you need to mobilize and make sure that your voices are heard. Now, there are a couple of good things happening. There's a new bill coming through the Assembly, and I urge you to call your, or to contact your, it's gone through the state senate, so contact your Assembly person, and it's called AB 222, and AB, I'm sorry, 2222, four twos, AB 2222. And AB 2222 will mean that if you have affordable housing, including rent-controlled housing, and somebody wants to Ellis it, or otherwise build something bigger, they will not get a density bonus. Or let me put it this way, we can control whether they get a density bonus. This is a terrific disincentive from tearing things down and building bigger things. So this is important, AB 2222. And finally, there is AB, I'm sorry, Senate Bill 1439. This is the bill that is allowing San Francisco to put brakes on Ellis-ing of at least some of their properties. You have to own it for more years, you have to hold it for five years, you have to disclose ownership. We want that in Los Angeles, and we want it in Santa Monica. And this is something that was specifically aimed for San Francisco, because San Francisco said, "We have an emergency." Well, we have an emergency here in Los Angeles, and we need to get around that, and we need to insist that we get this bill, AB 1439, or its equivalent, in Los Angeles, because...
AB or SB?
I'm sorry, you're right. It's SB, 1439, and thank you. Because, one minute? Okay.
Two minutes.
No, it's okay, it's okay. I can do it. We have neighborhood groups in this community. I think that more recently, the neighborhood groups have coalesced into a more significant force. I think that we've often been told that the neighborhood groups don't have any real standing in the city. I think that we need to assert the standing of the residents of this city, and when I say it, what I believe that we have, people in the city who are sympathetic. It is not everybody in the city who's not sympathetic. I, on the Planning Commission, am sympathetic to these issues. I'm not in a majority, but I'm sympathetic to these issues. But you need to talk to us. If you start seeing people being harassed in your building, you need to call me, call Denise, call Elena. I mean, we need to know before we can do anything. We're seeing, and Denise and I talk about this all the time, an increasing number of inspections that are used to harass tenants. So the landlord does the inspection, it unnerves a tenant, it becomes a volatile relationship, and suddenly you have grounds for eviction. I don't know what we can do about it, because I haven't really focused on it, but I guarantee there's something we can do about that kind of harassment. And if we don't know about it, we can't do it, but if you tell us, we will figure out a solution. And I want to thank you for having me back here.
My name is Richard McKinnon, and I'm a member of the Planning Commission. And two years ago, I ran as a city council candidate, and I talked a lot about development, and a lot of people thought that I was joking when I said there were gonna be a lot of problems coming up. But we're starting to see now, those problems, one after another, come true. And what is true is that the Pico neighborhood is under threat. You all know it, we know it, and we have to do something about it. We can't stand idly by. This neighborhood, and the people in this room, and the residents of this neighborhood are under threat, because right around Santa Monica, and around Los Angeles, and around the United States, people look at this neighborhood and think this could be a goldmine for them, that they could arrive, and they could change what's here. They could change the streets. They could change the old buildings that are here. They could change the remarkable sense of community and togetherness. And most of all, look around this room, they think they could change the people who live here, and they could swap in a whole lot of new people who have a lot more money, and then they, the developers, could leave with that cash and live somewhere else. That's the threat that we have. And so there are a few things that we can do if we're leaders in this community. And as a member of the Planning Commission, I am one of those appointed leaders. Tonight, you have a couple of other elected leaders, Ted Winter in the back there, and over here, you have Kevin McKeon. They know, and we know, that we now need to work together to put a fence around the Pico neighborhood that stops this land grab and this grab for dollars that's going on. So as a result of what we're seeing and have been seeing for the last several years, I have moved, and with the cooperation of Commissioner Hemmerich and some of the others, on July 8th, the Planning Commission will begin to look at what I've asked them to look at, the Pico Area Protection Zone. And it's a deliberate step to change the conditions under which people consume. And what I'm asking them to do is to make it harder for developers to remove old, older property, and the oldest, smaller property, which attract the smaller rents that so many people here enjoy. I'm asking them to stop the amalgamation of lots, to measure lots differently. These are all technical ways that are stopping developers, to keep the heights down, and to make it so difficult that people start to look elsewhere. It's a start. Our commission is entitled to look at that. Our commission is entitled to change the zoning in the city, to ask that the land plans be changed. And once we've done that, with the cooperation of a couple of other commissioners, our intention is to move it as an emergency, an emergency motion towards the city council, for these guys to do something about it rapidly. If we thought we could wait, we learnt down here on 20th that we can't. We have a building down there that will go up and switch out 15 people who have rent control and live in perfectly acceptable apartments, and switch in 20 people who will be multimillionaires, because they're the only ones who'll be able to afford the million-dollar condos that are going up there. So we are in the midst of an emergency. The Planning Commission on July 8th will begin to tackle it. The city council now needs to tackle it as a matter of urgency. And to drive that on, the people in this room need to put their hands up and start to speak up behind the leadership of the Pico neighborhood, and begin to represent themselves and their demands. Maybe 20, 25 years ago, the people in Ocean Park did exactly that, and we have special protections in the city of Santa Monica for the Ocean Park area. They were under threat then, this is the neighborhood that's under threat now. And this is the moment that the people in this room need to make their voice heard very clearly, very loudly, and for as long as it takes to get the protection in place that you all want, and we all know we need to give you. Thank you.
I'm Armin. I want to talk a little bit about policy and Santa Monica. Who in here loves Santa Monica? Everybody in here loves Santa Monica. Who wants to stay in Santa Monica? Everyone, everybody in this room wants to stay in Santa Monica. In Santa Monica, we had earlier the initialization of Rent Control Laws. This is where it started. This is where it started across the world. And Santa Monica was known across the world for it. And the Ellis Act is what killed it. That's what we heard about in the last panel. So the Ellis Act is what killed our rent control, and for the future. So what we have now is we have policies which tell us that we want affordable housing production. And everybody in this room is for affordable housing production, I assume.
No.
That's the right, that's the right answer. Because you know what? Affordable housing production actually kills our existing rent-controlled units, which are much more affordable than any affordable production that we can get. And so these are the policies that we need to change. This is, this is what the difference is in the people from this room and the policymakers. I believe it was either Harvard or Stanford, and I don't remember, and I apologize, but they just came out with a study, which showed that people who set policy always vote with the top 10% earners. Their policies are the same. They do not match the rest of the population, and that is the problem. So as a solution, I came up with a, with a new concept in resident democracy, to use the laws that we have currently to organize and to have residents set policy, as opposed to the top 10% set policy.
Right!
The organization which I created is called Residocracy, Resident Democracy. And you know what? That word has never existed in our English language.
That word has never existed in our English language until I thought it up one night. Sitting on my couch, I said, "Let me Google Residocracy because it sounds like a weird name." But it sounds like, you know, what's out there, Residocracy? And I Googled it. Zero results on Google. Zero.
Not anymore.
Not anymore. So the question is, how do we change policy? And it's through organization of the community. One of my problems that I see in Santa Monica is actually the separation of the neighborhoods in Santa Monica. I find that is actually a big problem. We have seven neighborhoods. We have an eight-square-mile city. We don't need seven neighborhoods. We need one Santa Monica. And that's the problem with setting policies. We need to, every community in this city is a resident of this city. And we need to act together and we need to act together in unity to change the policy. And the only way we could do that is through each other. The only way we could do that is one person equals one vote and not $1 equals one vote. We need to take the special interests out of politics. We need us as the special interest. The residents are the special interest. We are the ones who should be in control of our city. We are the ones who should be the people who say we don't want development. The development is what's driving the Ellis Act. It's what's coming. The way development works is as the prices of property get higher because the policies in our city are very pro-development, set by those special interests, set by the dollars. And as the price of property goes up, developers start moving in and they start taking the affordable housing that we currently have under the current rent-control laws and they remove it because of the Ellis Act and they no longer exist. Once they build new units, there's no rent control on those units. It doesn't exist. A lot of the developers will actually end up building these large units and they'll provide a rent. And the new kids in town, they come in and rent these very expensive units. And you know what? At the end of the year, their rent goes up by $700 for the next term lease. You can't do that under rent control. But as these new developments come in and remove the rent-controlled units, that's what's happening. And that's what's happening all over the city. And that's what I'm saying. It's not just the Pico neighborhood, it's all of Santa Monica. And we can't divide ourselves. We have to unite ourselves and we have to set the policy. We have to look at these elections that are coming up and we have to vote accordingly. We have to do the right thing. We can't be blown away by the bells and whistles. So Residocracy will be endorsing resident-centric, resident-oriented candidates. So I'm hoping that everybody in this room will pay attention because our heart is with the community, with the love of Santa Monica and with all residents across the entire city that every resident can live in Santa Monica without being displaced with development.
Thank you. Actually, before I wanted to start it, I wanted to take a moment to thank Oscar, Maria, and the Pico Neighborhood Association for organizing this tonight and the leadership they've shown on this issue. This is an issue that transcends the city. It's about more than just the Pico neighborhood, but this is where it's starting. And I am incredibly grateful to the partnership that we've had with the Pico Neighborhood Association and the leadership that they've shown on this because this is something that is a concern of residents across our community. I may not be a familiar face. Oh, sure. I may not be a familiar face to many of you. My name is Amy Oxticonus. I'm a resident just like you, who a couple of years ago became concerned about things that were going on in my neighborhood and development. You know, this beautiful city that we live in was changing around me and I was stunned. You know, how can this happen here in Santa Monica? So I became involved. A few years ago, I was... I became involved in our local neighborhood association, Northeast Neighbors. A year and a half ago, I was appointed to a member, as a member of the board. This past year, I became chair. And this last fall, I was fortunate enough to be appointed to the Housing Commission and become even more involved. It's been incredible education for me. It's also been an incredibly empowering experience. I think a year and a half ago, our neighborhood association was just getting back together. And I think through what we see here in this room is really, you were talking about, where is the power? This room is the power. Each individual is our power, working together collectively. And that's one thing that I've been really inspired by as part of our neighborhood association. We've had people from all parts of our community get involved, become educated about how they can better interact in this process in our city and affect change by writing emails, coming to meetings, talking to their neighbors, talking to the council members sitting next to you or the planning commissioner down the road and showing up at meetings. I think one of the prime opportunities we have right now is through the zoning ordinance update process. We have a real opportunity here. Sure. I'm from New Jersey, we talk fast. Sure. I think one of the prime opportunities we have right now is through the zoning ordinance update. We have an opportunity to set the standards in our city that can affect how development occurs or doesn't occur. And I think, yeah. And right now, you know, I think what we can see is we have the wrong incentive structure. You know, the project that's brought all this to light is very close to all of you down the street at 21st Street. And there are a lot of problems with that project. A lot of things that are being allowed based on current standards in our zoning code. And so I think that creates an incredible opportunity for us to get engaged, to ask for things, to make it better. One of the things that Armin talked about is the economic incentive. I'm also an economist, so that tends to be the way I look at things. And people's behavior is pretty much driven by dollars or their value they see in it. And we're seeing these properties developed because it's incredibly valuable to these developers. And so, and right now, our system's created that. And if we wanna prevent that, then we need to disincentivize that. And there's, I think, ways that we can do that through our zoning code. Commissioner McKinnon talked a little bit about this problem of consolidation of lots. Right now, we're seeing, instead of, you know, individual lots with setbacks, with the project over here on 21st Street, they wanna aggregate four lots, creating a massive project. Add the four lots together. And thank you, Catherine. Creating a much bigger project that's out of scale with our community. If we're able to remove those incentives, then we're able to preserve this important stock of affordable housing that we have currently. Other things that I think we should be doing is incentivizing adaptive reuse. It's less costly to do that than to build new. And that would be taking buildings that we have currently and reinventing them. So we still maintain the character in our neighborhoods but that they can be used for things like much-needed housing. If it's less costly to do that, then those apartments or those units could be more affordable. One of the other things that we can do is look to honoring some of the commitments that have been made to us under our new general plan process. We talked about preserving garden-stale, community apartments. This is something the Landmarks Commission is looking into and in particular with the property down the road. And I think those are opportunities for how we can look to preserve this. We can put standards in the zoning that protect us against bigger developments. One way to do that is to have step downs in densities for the bigger projects. We have that for commercial projects on our Gold Bards right now. So the bigger the lot, the less dense you can build. Right now, we don't have that for residential. And so we see these problems of the lots being aggregated. But I think the way to, and these are things that can be done through the zoning. But like I said, I think the real opportunity is getting involved. I think knowledge is power. I think community is power, unity is power. Working with the different neighborhood organizations is the way we're gonna affect change. So I encourage you to stay involved. We've been, we were a small neighborhood organization and through working together with some of the other neighborhood associations, we've been having great success. We took on a big developer a few weeks ago, a case that they thought we would never win. And we're fortunate that the Planning Commission unanimously agreed with us that the project they were proposing was a terrible project. It needed to be improved. As a resident and a community member, I'm also here to tell you that this is possible. I mean, I think that there's a lot of people that'll say, "These people have a lot of money, it can't be done." Don't believe them. The strength is really in this room and it can be done. Thank you.
Let's have one more round of applause for all of our panelists. Thank you very much. As I look out to the crowd, you know, I see the hope in our community. You know, all of you represent the hope that we can make a change, that we can make, not the hope of Barack Obama, as Mike Feinstein said. He's making jokes, I heard that joke. But the hope of Santa Monica, you know, real solutions at the local level, right? And so we wanted to open up the forum for anyone in the crowd, any one of you that have ideas. There was a lot of good ideas that were brought forward. This city has a great tradition of organizing residents to make progressive change possible. To really, what it comes down to is to put the people before the profit, right? That's really our goal here in this city, is to put the people before the profit. And in order to do that, we need to build power. We need to organize ourselves. We need to participate. Tonight is a very good start.